2021, Ms. Rexdale, roll call please.
Ms. Meese, Mr. Dudley.
Present.
Mr. Stowe.
Present.
Mr. Horn.
Present.
Mr. Waters.
Present.
Ms. Henderson.
Present.
Mr. Harker.
Present.
Mr. Haymore.
Present. Ladies and gentlemen, would you stand with me please for a moment of silence and the pledge to the flag? Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, one God, and indelible for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Is there any citizen here tonight that has anything that they need to bring before the planning commission that is not on the agenda? Thank you very much. Approval of agenda, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the agenda presented to us.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Stowe, second by. All ready for roll call, I'm so vote.
Hi, Mr. Stowe, hit that button.
Okay, there you go.
Let the record show seven yes and one absent. Approval of the minutes, do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes presented to us.
Motion by Mr. Stowe, second.
I'll second.
Mr. Dudley, second. Ready for roll call?
Mr. Waters got it.
Was it Mr. Waters?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Let the record show seven yes and one absent. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pennsylvania County's zoning ordinance, we, the planning commission, have been empowered to hear, decide specific applications in support of said ordinance, to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accordance with this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding a zoning case will be limited to three minutes. At 7:03, case R-21028 is open for public hearing, Ms. Rexdale.
Case R-21028, Gary and Jeanette Short have petitioned to rezone 34.91 acres located on State Road 762, Simpson Lane, in the Stanton River Election District, from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District, to combine with an adjacent parcel of land zoned A1. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Short is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Short, you have anything that you would like to add other than what we have in our packet? Thank you, sir. Anyone have any comments? At 7:04, case R-21028 is closed to public hearing, Mr. Harker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, in case R-21028, rezoning from R1 Residential to A1 Agricultural District, I make a motion that we accept this request.
Motion by Mr. Harker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion or comments from any of the commissioners?
No, sir.
If not, we're ready for a vote.
Did you hit yours? Uh oh, Stowe didn't hit it, hang on. I don't vote.
Let the record show seven yes, one absent. At 7:05, case R-21030 is open for public hearing, Ms. Rexdale.
Case R-21030, trustees of Macedonia Baptist Church have petitioned to rezone 2.696 acres located on State Road 750, Green Pond Road, in the Callens-Gartner Election District, from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District, to allow for a cemetery on joint church property. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted, the staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, Mr. Chairman, Kermit King is here to represent the petition.
Mr. King, you have anything that you'd like to add, or we do not have in the packet? Come right around, sir, how you doing? Good to see you, sir.
Yeah, now we can hear you.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Thank you all for allowing us to speak and for hearing our petition tonight. Like I said, my name is Kermit King, I represent the trustees of Macedonia Baptist Church in the Callens-Gartner Voting District. Like I said, we are currently requesting that you, for your consideration, the rezoning of 2.696 acres of existing church property from R1 to A1 for a new cemetery. Like I said, our church is over 100 years old, and due to the years of, you know, funerals and down there, before my time, some, a lot of it was before my time, but we have run out of room. And for our future of the church, then we need to make this addition to our cemetery to start fresh again, so that we won't ever have to do this again. That's what we're trying to do, is do things one time, so we won't have to do it again. But like I said, in that, sir, we've already had this surveyed off, I think you have it in your packet, but we also have a layout that we've had a survey or draw up to actually mark where the graves are going to be, and where we can locate them, and everything will be written and documented chronologically and alphabetically, and everywhere, you know, where we can look up and say, so-and-so was buried in plot G3, and we'll know where it is. But thank you for hearing us, for allowing us to come and speak before you tonight, do you have any questions for me?
Any question from Mr. King?
I just want to make a comment, thank you for coming in, you know, for the church as a trustee and all, but also want to thank him, a lot of folks don't know, he serves on the Fire and Rescue Commission, he's a firefighter, and I just want to commend you for everything you do, sir, in front of everybody too, not just shaking your hand, coming up the aisle too, so.
Thank you.
That's all, thank him for his service.
Thank you for the board helping, you know, for all the board does for us.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, thank you.
Any other questions or comment, Mr. King?
I'd like to add to that too, Mr. King and I spent about 14 hours together Tuesday at Callens Fire Department at the polls, I appreciate you taking care of us there at the polls.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, thank y'all for being, for being cordial, and it was a good day.
It was, good day.
I think we could give him a hand.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. If there's no other questions or comment.
We have someone signed up to speak.
Pardon?
You have someone signed up to speak?
Oh.
Okay.
I'm sorry, come around.
What's her name?
Mr. Fuller? Yes, sir, I'm sorry, Mr. Fuller, turned the wrong page.
Okay, my name is John Fuller, I live right across from where they trying to put the cemetery. I feel that I do not want to wake up every morning, leave my driveway, sit on my porch, and look at the cemetery. They got equal land on both sides of the church, they shouldn't want to put it in front of my house, I feel like that will drop the value of my house and the whole works.
So is that all, any comments or questions from any commissioners or Mr. Fuller?
Yes, sir, can you see the church from your house?
I can see the church from my house.
Okay, how about the other cemetery?
No.
You cannot see it?
I cannot see it.
Okay, that's fine, thank you, that's the only question.
No one else sign up to speak? I'm sorry, Mr. Fuller, I turned it, I didn't catch that. All right, 7:10, case R-2103 is closed to public hearing, Mr. Horn.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, in case R-21030, I make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that we grant this petition.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Horn, second by Mr. Dudley, is any further discussion or questions? Not, we're ready for a vote. Let the record show seven yes, one absent, the case R-21030 be recommended to the Board of Supervisors to be rezoned. At 7:11, case 21031 is open for public hearing, Ms. Rexdale.
Case R-21031, George Shelton has petitioned to rezone one acre located at 2765 Mill Creek Road, in the Bannister Election District, from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District, to combine with an adjacent property zoned A1. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted, the staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, Mr. Chairman, George Shelton is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Shelton.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any comments, any questions or comments you want to make concerning this that we do not have in the packet? Sir?
I don't have any comments.
No comments? Any commissioner have any questions or comments to Mr. Shelton? If not, at 7:12, case R-21031 is closed to public hearing, Mr. Horn.
It's Bannister District, that's going to be Ms. Colleen?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, that's going to be Bannister.
Bannister District, Ms. Henderson.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the board would approve or recommend to the Board of Supervisors to approve this case R1, I'm sorry, R-21031. I have not received any phone calls in opposition to it or emails, so if we could.
Motion by Ms. Henderson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harker, any discussion or comments from any commissioner?
No, sir.
Not, we're ready for a vote.
Hi, Ms. Colleen, there you go.
Let the record show seven yes, one absent, the case R-21031 be recommended for the Board of Supervisors to be rezoned from R1 to A1. At 7:14, case 021032 is open for public hearing, Ms. Rexdale.
Case R-21032, Richard and Rhonda Hash have petitioned to rezone 19.29 acres located on State Road 854 Locust Drive, in the Tunstall Election District, from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District, and RC1 Residential Combined Subdivision District, to A1 Agricultural District, to combine with an adjacent property, piece of land zoned A1. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted, the staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, Mr. Chairman, Rhonda Hash is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Hash, you have anything that you'd like, or Ms. Hash to add to any items that we have already in our possession? Do you want to have any questions for Mr. Hash? If not, 7:15, case 021032 is closed to public hearing, Mr. Stowe.
I make a motion that we accept the rezoning case as presented.
Motion by Mr. Stowe.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dudley, is any discussion, anyone have any comments concerning? We're ready for a vote.
Thank you, Brian.
Let the record show seven yes, one absent, and the case 021032, the two parcels be rezoned and recommended to the Board of Supervisors. At 7:17, case S-21012 is open for public hearing, Ms. Rexdale.
Case S-21012, Axton Solar LLC has petitioned for a special use permit on 225.58 acres located off State Road 612 Medical Center Road, State Road 614 Sugar Barber Road, and State Road 616 Moscow Road, in the Tunstall Election District, for a utility scale solar energy facility. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, Mr. Chairman, a representative from Axton Solar is here to represent the petition.
Yes, the representative from Axton Solar, come forward, sir, good evening, welcome.
Good evening, I have a couple of handouts, first of all, thank you for having me, a couple of handouts, nothing too different from what you've already received.
Is his mic on, I can't hear you.
Could y'all pick up that house mic right there, if you don't mind, in the back?
There's one in front of you, that's Mike.
There you go.
Go ahead, sir. All right, good evening, I'm Trey Lopez, representing an Axton Solar project with Vesper Energy. I'll refer you to the last page, primarily what we are seeking, consideration for special use permit approval, are the red parcels on the eastern portion in Pennsylvania County, those are the new parcels that we're looking to add for consideration of solar development associated with the Axton Solar project. What you see in blue are the previously approved parcels for special use permit that we were here last year.
How many total acres is this going to be, once it's done?
Collectively, right now, under option, we have about 2,900 acres between Henry and Pennsylvania County, does not necessarily mean that all 2,900 acres will be developed on. We're coming back to Pennsylvania County to add in additional parcels based on some of the studies that we had conducted in the field, so we're trying to avoid impacts to wetland areas that were designated or determined on the properties. That's why we're seeking additional land to compensate for the areas that we're trying to avoid.
Any other questions or comment, go ahead, Mr. Stowe.
On the Moscow Road.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's 616. How close you come into the property, if at any corner of the road, to the house there?
Moscow Road, I'd have to look at the, even though I've been out here quite a bit, I'm not quite familiar with the roads just yet. But based on the setback requirements that are imposed by the county and the zoning ordinances, the requirement that we would adhere to, whether it be 25 feet from houses, or 50 foot setback from adjacent property boundary lines.
So you would fall under the ordinance amendment that was adopted last fall, which increased setbacks to 150 feet.
Right.
All the way around the property, and then 200 feet from any residential use property line.
Okay, would that be for these parcels that we're just seeking approval on?
Yes, yes. The rest of the project would fall under the previous ordinance.
Okay.
Were you saying 200 foot from a, that property, the line?
A property line, that, for any property that's used for residential use currently, would be 200 feet.
At least 200 feet. Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, thank you, the trees, let's discuss that, because that's a, that's a big deal with, with a lot of the folks. When our ordinance, what is the height minimum, five foot starting out, six, six foot? Leland cypress, is that what you're putting up?
We will put together a landscape management plan, present it to the county before we issue any building permits. But yes, the plan is to put together a comprehensive vegetation management landscape plan, present it to the county for approval, and it will indicate, you know, various types of shrubs, trees, various widths apart from one another.
Have you guys met with any of the locals there, set up meetings at fire departments, anything to say, I'm here to take 2,900 acres, and, you know, it's, it's causing a lot of headache for some neighbors in countywide.
Right.
I'm just telling you, the reason I'm saying, I helped with a campaign a while back, we knocked on doors, and that was a big, that was a big deal, Richard Waters can probably tell you the same. Have you guys set up at a fire department, had meetings, and showed people around there what they've done, what you're going to do?
Yeah, so we did have issues with the, the fire department, given COVID, but we did beat at the Galilean Church in Axton, on a couple of occasions, met with community members, provided, or addressing the feedback that they had and any concerns.
I would recommend staying connected with them, it's a big deal, you know, it may not end, because all we have to do is vote and move on, and you move on, but it's a big deal when you settle in a neighborhood with that many acres and that much going on, so.
Right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Any other comments or questions for this gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Roger Wilson, Mr. Wilson, you want to speak, sir? Come around, sir.
Come on in.
Welcome, good evening, sir.
My name is Roger Wilson, I am in the Tunstall District, and my residence is located at 1596 Maple Springs Drive in Axton, it's the property that Mr. Stowe was referencing. I want to thank you for allowing me time to speak and voice my concerns at the meeting. And first of all, I'm really not here to, you know, to point any fingers, or to begrudge any of the landowners in the Axton community who have signed on to this solar project. You know, if I'd have been offered the sums of money to lease or purchase my land that were multiple times over the annual tax assessment, or multiple times over the assessed value of my land, I would be hard pressed not to make the same decisions that some of these landowners have made. However, I do have some major concerns with the amount and locations of the land that is being leased or purchased for this project, as well as the lack of any meaningful protections for the local neighborhood residents and for the Axton community as a whole. I was not aware that the setbacks had been pushed back, you know, previously, so I may make some, some comments that are out of place, but, you know, I really feel that if, if this, you know, project is approved, it's going to negatively affect all of the homeowners living near or adjacent to any of the new solar panel construction sites. As most of you are aware, there's already a large solar farm that has been established in Axton, just across the Henry County line. And about a year or two ago, lease and purchase agreements were made on vast areas of property in other parts of our community to be utilized for this new proposed solar project. And much of this land is right along our public roadways, even where some of it's right against the property of many of the area homeowners. And I feel like that if all of this land is eventually utilized, you know, you're going to have a whole swath of the Axton community that's going to be turned into one giant solar farm. And many of the community residents are going to have to live right in the middle of that. My wife and I, we recently found out that the solar company is wanting to increase the scope of their project, adding more land on both Moscow Road and Medical Center Road. And part of this expansion does include land that borders my backyard with the. And part of this expansion does include land that borders my backyard with the adjoining property line less than a hundred feet from my home. Um, my wife and I, when we purchased our little small piece of property about three years ago, uh, we purchased it mainly due to the fact that it was located in a quiet country neighborhood, situated in a beautiful rural area of the county. And since then, we have poured our life savings as well as hundreds of hours of personal time and labor into building our house and trying to make this property our dream home. We have constantly been working to improve our yard and surrounding landscape to make it a clean and beautiful addition to our local neighborhood. And when we found out about the plans to install these panels right next to our property, we were devastated because we know that if they are installed here, it's going to destroy the natural beauty of the area around our home that we've tried so hard to improve upon. And we also know that this is the same sentiment felt by most of the other community residents about their homes and property as well. Um, although I, I had a lot more to say, I'll, I'll just simply ask that you, uh, do consider or uphold the, um, increased setbacks on any property that is proposed for solar use that borders against, um, a residence, um, home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Any questions for?
Mr. Wilson? I had one question. The, the increase in the setback, is that, does that make it, I, I know it's not, obviously not appealing to you, you know, but does that make it, does that improve your situation?
It, it makes, it makes it better, but, you know.
Is most of the land that borders your, your property open land, or is it wooded?
Yeah, it's, it's, well, the, the tract that, that I'm talking about is just a small, open piece of property, and then there's right much wooded property, um, that this particular landowner, um, has. Um, but yeah, the, the surrounding area in our community is a lot of open, um, farmland. Yes.
And it, uh, you're, but you're telling, you're saying that, that it's gonna come within right up to that distance from your, from your property line, solar panels? They're planning on utilizing that adjacent parcel for?
Yes, sir, I'm not, I'm not sure. I've talked to Mr. Lopez about this, and, you know, he's told me that they're, they haven't totally decided whether or not that piece of property is feasible or not because of some of the ongoing studies. But, you know, I, I wanted to voice my concerns now before it got to that, to that point. Yes, and, and my home is, is, like I say, it's only a hundred feet from the property line.
Absolutely, okay.
Any other questions or comments to Mr. Wilson? Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Yes, sir. You want, yeah, do you know? Does anybody have any questions for gentlemen from?
How much more land you gonna need?
We're, we're, yes, we're anticipating this should be it. This should be the last request for additional properties. Again, the, the original, the, the, the reason why we've come back is because of avoidance areas that we're trying to, to compensate.
Are you, are you familiar with, with this particular property that this gentleman's?
I am. I've had the pleasure of, uh, speaking with Mr. and Mrs. Wilson. They've invited me to their home on a couple of occasions. We spoke over the phone. And again, I've tried to, to stress, you know, we're very still early in the preliminary design phases. Uh, most of the work we just completed on all the properties, studying the wetland delineated areas. So I haven't gotten back to them based on those results, uh, but once I'm able to do so, um, I think you'll be pleasantly surprised.
So you're planning to work with them every way you can? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir, of course. And I think also the, the existing vegetation, we do, you know, intend to plan, plan to leave there, uh, just because it'd be more cost-effective for us to leave the natural vegetation instead of clearcutting that and reestablishing new, uh, shrubs and trees.
There's open field behind his house. How close y'all usually try to plant? Oh, you gotta have a barrier between, uh, his property and your property.
Right, so based on the setback requirements, well, there will not be any type of, uh, fence constructed within that two-hundred-foot setback.
Okay. All right, you got two-hundred foot, then you got the?
So then they'll leave, that will leave the natural vegetation and/or if there are no, if there is no existing vegetation, then our landscape management plan will incorporate.
Behind his house is just open field. Uh, anyway, okay, okay.
Any other questions for? Right, sir. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address the gentleman for a moment. Um, quick, excuse me, a quick question. Um, where my home is situated, I'm kind of central to several of the solar projects that have been ongoing in the community. And, um, one of the issues that continuously comes up when we have this, um, question and answer session um, is particularly the employment of local contractors. And I've had the pleasure of closing a loan for a gentleman with another outfit. It's working close, and they're from Texas, the majority of them. Um, I've studied some of the trucks that come in and the local help, have not seen any yet, and this has been about a year that I've been monitoring this. So I'd just like to ask you directly, you did say that some of this has already been completed or a portion of it? And I do see here that you all do say local labor force will be used to the extent feasible. Have you all employed people locally, and if so, an estimate?
I do not have, uh, exact figures on the work that's been conducted, um, to date, um, or the amount of personnel. However, some of our consultants are based in Virginia. Um, legal representative that I have right here with me, uh, Mr. John Povac, is out of, uh, Roanoke, Virginia, um, so we are using them for all of our local permitting efforts. Um, and then our CPC and application that we'll file with the SEC as well. Um, and then when it comes to the EPC work, the actual physical, physical construction, there'll be an RFP that we will send out, um, and that will be sourced from our EPC, internal EPC team within Vesper.
Okay, thank you for that, but that, to me, is, is a concern because we hear that, not, and not to, it all disparage you, but that just seems to be something that comes up continually, and I've been watching it, and it doesn't seem to be happening. So for us to continually sacrifice land and here are constituents, it's an issue. Um, we don't have much else to offer them in the way of a return. So that's something I think going forward to be considered, but thank you for answering my questions.
Any other questions or comments for this gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It's seven thirty-four, case S twenty-one zero one-two is closed to public hearing. Mr. Stowe?
Uh, in case S one, oh. Get old, can't see.
S twenty-one zero one-two.
Zero, S twenty-one zero, oh, two.
Uh, one-two.
One-two, okay. Uh, with the, on the three-hundred foot, a hundred foot of the property owner, another two-hundred foot. Uh, I understand his situation and what he's, he's considering. I was sitting in the middle of a hundred and twelve acres of land. Got old, the kids don't want it, so I sold it. So I'm, I'm sitting in the, in the middle of that with two acres and two tenths. I understand what he's, where he's going, uh, with that, but anything else could move in on top of him. And I believe this would be less of a problem here, so with that, I make a motion that we approve this project.
Is that with the conditions?
Conditions by the staff, yes.
Uh.
With the conditions.
That they use all the setback, and that he worked with his, worked with them, uh, with it too.
And there's seventeen conditions that, you know, up to that, so.
Right.
With the conditions, I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Stowe, and second by Mr. Dudley. Is any further discussion?
You good with that, Emily? Need to add anything?
I don't think so. The seventeen conditions by staff, and did you add any additional conditions?
I, I didn't.
Okay, I don't, I don't think you did. I just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss anything.
That's right, yes, ma'am. All right, I gotta hit my second.
Any other questions? Ready for a vote? Let the record show seven yes, one absent. So case S twenty-one zero one-two, the special use permit will be recommended to the Board of Zoning Appeals. At seven thirty-six, case S twenty-one zero one-five is open for public hearing. Ms. Rexdale?
Case S dash two-one dash zero one-five, Harry Parks has petitioned for a special use permit on one point two-seven acres located at five thirteen Hickory Road in the Bannister Election District to allow for the placement of a single-wide mobile home to be used for his personal residence. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Parks is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
You have anything that you'd like to add or present to us that we do not have in the packet?
No, sir.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Parks, for a minute, Commissioner? Not. Seven thirty-seven, case S twenty-one zero one-five is closed to public hearing. Mrs. Henderson?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, um, just request that the request of Mr. Parks be approved or recommended to the Board of Supervisors. I don't see any conditions attached to that.
I think it's gonna go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Board of Zoning, oh, forgive me. Board of Zoning Appeals.
Motion by Ms. Henderson. I hear second?
Second.
Who's second?
Me.
Mr. Horn. Any further discussion or questions? If not, we're ready for a vote.
He got pole position on that.
Let the record show seven yes, zero, no, one absent. So in case S twenty-one zero one-five, special use permit will be recommended to the Board of Zoning Appeals. At seven thirty-eight, case S two-one dash zero one-six is open for public hearing. Ms. Rexdale?
Case S dash two-one dash zero one-six, Old Dominion Agricultural Foundation has petitioned for a special use permit on forty-nine point one-five acres located on US Highway twenty-nine in the Bannister Election District for a campground. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Harris from Old Dominion Agricultural Foundation is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Harris? You have anything you want to add? John, that we already have in the packet? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Harris? If not, at seven thirty-nine, case dash S twenty-one dash zero one-six is closed to public hearing. Mrs. Henderson?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that in this case, uh, we do recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals that this be approved.
Motion by Ms. Henderson. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Waters. Any further discussion or questions? Not, we're ready for a vote. Did it come up on, I can?
Hadn't come up yet.
Mm-mm.
Just some handsome dude, his picture up there, I don't know.
Oh, one of us didn't go through, probably.
Couldn't be me.
It rung a bell. Okay, now we got it. It was me.
Yeah, it's got it, yeah. Let the record show seven yes, one absent. In case?
Thanks, sir.
S twenty-one dash zero one-six, special use permit recommended to the Board of Zoning Appeals. At seven forty-one, case C A zero zero-three is open for public hearing. Ms. Rexdale?
Mr. Chairman, um, in case C A dash twenty-one dash zero one-three, George Nedriga, I, I knew I was gonna butcher that, has petitioned for code amendment to Pennsylvania County Code, um, chapter thirty-five um, dash six-one. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Um, Mr. Nedriga is here to represent the petition.
Sir, come around. You have anything you want to add? Any questions for this gentleman? No questions or comment? Not, at seven forty-two, case C A zero zero-three is closed to public hearing. Which district is that in?
Um, it's not in, it would just be a general, um, what, well, technically, this would benefit the Callens-Gretner District the most. Um, the code amendment, currently, the ordinance recognizes the front yard of properties that border Smith Mountain Lake and Leesville Lake as the portion of the lot between the principal structure and the lake, um, or between the principal structure and the road. So the rear yard is between the principal structure and the lake, so all accessory buildings are required to be placed either in the side yard or rear yard, blocking the view of these properties, their, their lake view. Um, so this petition would amend the code to reverse that and allow property, the rear yard to be viewed um, as the portion of the lot between the principal structure and the road um, for properties that border Smith Mountain Lake and Leesville Lake.
Leesville Lake also?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve this.
Motion by Mr. Horn.
I second that.
Second, Ms. Henderson. Any further discuss, discussions or comments? Not, we're ready for a vote.
All right.
Let the record show seven yes and one absent. Thank you, sir. At seven forty-three, case C A zero zero-four is open for public hearing. Ms. Rexdale?
Mr. Chairman, um, in case, um, C A dash twenty-one dash zero zero-four, um, before you is, um, staff is proposing, um, the attached amendments to our current solar ordinance, which is section thirty-five dash one forty-one C, um, D and E. Um, the proposed amendments are included in your packet.
I've had telephone calls today. Is anyone here to comment on that? Yes, sir. Pardon?
Got two people signed up on your list.
Great, good evening, Chairman Hamer and the rest of the commission. Appreciate the time. My name is Kieran Seau, and I'm the Director of Development with Dimension Energy. We're a community solar developer. Um, yesterday, our counsel, Matthew Roberts from Bean Kitty Corman, submitted a letter to the commission uh, regarding this text amendment. I have copies of that letter, which I'm happy to provide here to all of you today if you didn't receive it. So I'm here to just reiterate the points we make in the letter specifically that we urge the commission to recommend denial of the text amendment as it's currently proposed. Um, because its minimum threshold for project size, twenty-five megawatts AC, uh, would prohibit community solar, uh, in the entire county. So our company is currently working with several landowners in the county. Um, we have contracts in place to propose to develop community solar scale projects on their land. If the commission is not familiar with community solar, it's a relatively new class of solar project. It was started through the shared solar law that was passed by the state last year. And it is fundamentally different than true utility scale solar, uh, in several different ways. The first is the size. So when we talk about a twenty-five megawatt project, that's a substantial amount of land. Before we think about setbacks and vegetative screening, that's over a hundred and fifty to two hundred acres of land. and vegetative screening, that's over a hundred and fifty to two hundred acres of land. Under the community solar program, the shared solar law, the state has capped the size of these projects at five megawatts AC. So they're substantially smaller in size. And with that small capacity, we have a significantly smaller footprint. A community solar project is only around thirty acres as compared to two hundred or five hundred or a thousand acres of land. And that allows us to be a lot more nimble in our siting and a lot more thoughtful in our design. So we can put these only where it makes sense and design them in a way that makes sense and is in alignment with the character of the community. Also using things like vegetative screening to adequately screen the project from view, minimizing and mitigating visual impact. The other big difference besides the fact that these projects are significantly smaller is how they're actually used on the grid. A utility scale project just sells their power back to Dominion or the cooperative, no different than any other energy type. Community solar is fundamentally different from this. For a community solar project, the way it works on the grid is we subscribe residential customers to receive credit for their share of the power produced by the solar facility. And that share is reflected in their Dominion bill, month over month, as a direct savings. And I should mention that of course, there is a cooperative in the county, but one in every five households in Pennsylvania County is a Dominion customer, so twenty percent. This is an opportunity for them to subscribe, to receive clean energy, and receive a direct saving, month over month, on their utility bill, which is a great consumer choice program, which would be effectively greatly limited by the passage of the ordinance in its current form, which would prohibit this type of development. Lastly, we just want to mention that while under the current state law, projects of the size cannot enter into siting agreements based on their size, there are still ways to contribute financial assistance to the counties, which we have deployed successfully in many other counties around the state as we're developing projects under this program. Specifically, under the state's special exception program, it allows projects of our size to contribute substantial real estate and substantial cash payments as part of the special exception program. So in summary, we think that by setting this minimum project size of twenty-five acres, it creates a unfortunate situation where excluding specific types of projects that can be cited properly and effectively, and the ones that create the greatest benefit to residential customers. So we would request and urge this Commission to reject the ordinance in its current form, authorize staff to go back and revise the ordinance as currently written, to instead carve out and separately define community solar or shared solar as a separate entity from true utility scale, and draft standards that make sense for this particular scale of project based on the benefits it could provide the community and the risks and impacts it mitigates and minimizes and eliminates from the community. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Hold just one second. Any questions or comments, this gentleman, before you?
Is that item number two, is that the only item in the ordinance, proposed ordinance, that you have an issue with?
It would be the size and the requirement that says all projects must enter into a siting agreement before permit is issued. Because these projects are small in size, currently is not allowed under state law to enter into siting agreements. So perhaps what the Commission, the county could do is make that still the case for true utility scale, twenty-five and above, but they make a separate category called community scale for these projects that are five megawatts AC and less, that does not have the siting requirement.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Zunk, do you have a comment? Welcome. Good evening, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Dudley and members of the Commission, my name is Skylar Zunk. I'm from Chesterfield County, Virginia. I'm here on behalf of Conservatives for Clean Energy and specifically the Land and Liberty Coalition. A little bit about me, I got my start in watching a bit of energy policy take place during my service in the Trump Administration up in DC. More recently, I served on a Republican campaign for governor. I've started with Conservatives for Clean Energy a number of months ago, traveling around the Commonwealth advocating for responsible, smart, conservative energy policy when it comes to solar development. We talk a lot about property rights, and I know Pennsylvania County has been a great county to be a landowner. You guys respect property rights and folks' ability to rezone like you did this morning and do what they want on the land that they pay taxes on. Other counties aren't as friendly and as constitutional as you are. We also talk about economic development, and I especially appreciated Ms. Henderson's comment about local labor being used, skilled labor. And if you ask me a question about that after my three minutes, I'd love to talk to you about it. But the fact is, due to recent laws that have been passed, you guys can tax solar projects quite a lot. And I'm a conservative, I don't like taxes too much, but in some cases it makes sense. And I know the recent effort, the ballot measure to increase the sales tax for schools for some of that funding failed just slightly. I talked with Mr. Dudley about that earlier. Fourteen hundred dollars per megawatt per year is what you can charge a utility scale solar project right now. That's a lot of revenue that I hope you guys take advantage of. But in regards to the ordinance as it's currently stated, you guys do a lot of good stuff. Buffers, vegetation, decreasing that distance limit to one mile. I think that's phenomenal. That's a win for Pennsylvania residents. But you know, as was mentioned earlier, the minimum size of twenty-five megawatts, you know, those are relatively small projects. They're not the thousand acres. These are hundred, ten, fifteen, twenty acre projects. That would hurt the little guy in the county, the smaller landowners, who would not be able to enter into lease agreements or develop solar on a smaller scale. Community solar, shared solar, there's a lot of different names for it, but I'd really encourage you all to encourage staff to look at ways to allow solar projects, no matter the megawattage. Maybe it's five megawatts, maybe it's ten. There's certainly a whole lot of... I'd love to engage with you all more and the Board of Supervisors as you guys work towards amending the solar ordinance. It's important to get it done right the first time, so you're not having to revisit this in six months or a year. I'd love to be a part of that. And in my small remaining time, I had the chance to meet with the Director of the Shine Program in Southside Virginia Community College, who's training young men and women on how to install these different solar projects. They're having a hard time recruiting folks locally, but they're increasing their enrollments now that COVID is over and they can do in-person learning. In a couple of weeks, they're going to be hosting a large event in Lynchburg where they're going to be training young people to get credentialed so that more of that workforce stays in the community. But the benefits to the community otherwise are the taxes you guys are able to do, funding, whatever government programs you would like to do with that tax money. Hopefully, we can make it more of a job story so that more Virginia men and women are working on these projects as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zunk.
Thank you, brother. Appreciate it, man.
Mr. Horn? Have you seen Mr. Roberts's letter?
We have. They bring up valid concerns, and we plan to change the wording before it goes to the Board of Supervisors to not prohibit solar projects less than twenty-five megawatts. And as far as the site agreement, the language in there, remind me, Emily, it says, "Siting agreements will be required if..."
So it says no...
"...required by Virginia law or something."
Right. So it basically says that they should be initiated. Siting agreements by the applicant shall be, they should initiate negotiations with the county for a siting agreement as authorized by the Code of Virginia. Their project would be exempt from siting agreements, therefore that code section would not apply to them because it's not authorized by the Code of Virginia. So we don't feel that that is in violation of what the Code of Virginia allows.
But for the utility scale, the twenty-five and up?
We do recommend removing that number two item.
Okay. But what about the siding agreements? In other words, that only applies to the...
Right. So everything else, everything that the Code of Virginia allows a siting agreement for, we would require to enter into negotiations with the county before they submit any type of application for rezoning or special use permit for those projects. If it's not allowed by the Code of Virginia, obviously, we would not, we would not enter into a siting agreement. So that requirement would not apply to them.
Do we move forward with the proposal that's... Do we have it now, Ms. Rexdale?
You could recommend approval, removing that item two under Section thirty-five one forty-one C, which would be that requirement for the twenty-five megawatt minimum. So your motion would, could be that you recommend approval as presented with that amendment.
I'll make that motion that we, that we approve this with that number two removed to eliminate that issue. With the understanding too that that siding agreement does not apply to the community, community solar.
You've heard Mr. Horne's motion. Is I second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Dudley. Is any further discussion? Questions?
There are other amendments, the D and the E, that need to be mentioned too, I would assume.
Correct. I mean, if you want to discuss them, you can. If you would like for me to highlight them, I'd be more than happy to.
Please do.
So we added additional buffering requirements. We increased the minimum landscape width from fifteen feet to a hundred feet. That has to be a vegetative buffer of a hundred feet wide. At least one row has to be twenty-five feet tall. All other staggered rows must be a minimum of fifteen feet at maturity. All of them have to be at least six feet at the time of planning. We are requiring that landscape renderings be sealed by a registered landscape architect. Power cannot be sold until a final inspection has been conducted and all requirements of the ordinance and the special use permit have been fulfilled in any siding agreement. We have some requirements, oops, some requirements about providing contact information at all times for the property, who is in charge of the property. We are requiring that the facility be opened within three days, three days' notice for any required inspections. That a fire suppression plan be approved by our Director of Public Safety. I know that's been a concern for a lot of the local fire departments, especially for the projects that also offer battery storage. And then that all inspections be done by a third-party inspector to take that off of our building inspections office and allow additional eyes to be, to be put on the property. And then, under decommissioning, we would require that the property be returned to a condition that was conducive to its prior use.
Ms. Henderson and gentlemen, y'all have heard the proposed changes or confirmed, I guess it'd be better.
I would like, forgive me, Mr. Chairman, I would, if it's okay to try to follow up on my last question or comment about the labor force. Would it be appropriate to add an item there for a list to possibly be maintained by those entities that if be necessary, that the public may request that? That those companies maintain a list of local contractors or any contractors that are utilized?
We can request that, but I don't think it's appropriate to include in ordinance.
I think every time we've urged everybody that they could, it's had them to use it, but like Mr. Horn, I'm not sure we can put it in there. Any further comments or questions?
I'll call for the questions.
You got, I think you, you agreed.
Motion still on the floor.
Motion still stands as presented. I second.
And second by Mr. Dudley.
I don't see where we can vote yet.
Any other comments or questions? We're not, we're ready for a vote.
Yes, sir.
Moving, I'm the shaker. Here we go.
One missing?
Yes, the green one, yeah.
Let the record show, seven yes, one absent. Old business, Ms. Rexdale?
There is no old new, old business.
I notice we got a new business.
We do. So a variance application was submitted. These come before planning commission so that you all have the option, it's not a public hearing, but you all have the option to make a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and this will go to their meeting next week. So that is case V dash twenty-one dash zero zero two. Jessica O'Neill has petitioned for a variance on point three-two acres located on State Road six forty-one, Spartan Lane in the Callens-Gretner Election District. And this is a variance to Section thirty-five dash two two six, minimum yard dimensions, A, front setback, and C, rear setback of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance. Staff did include a staff summary highlighting the five criteria that are required to grant a variance and outline why staff feels that this project does meet those requirements for your review. The need for this is a rear porch needs to be added to the back of the residence to allow for ingress and egress to meet the Uniform Statewide Building Code. And the same would apply to the front porch. Those are currently in disrepair and need to be replaced. But all of this is in your packet, so you all can make a recommendation if you so choose.
You folks have heard Ms. Rexdale's comments concerning this? Is there a motion on it?
Mr. Chairman, could we have just, just one minute to...
Yes, sir.
To look at this.
Yes.
Is this a Jessica O'Neill variance?
Question, is the property in the rear of this property we're talking about, is that A-one agricultural?
I believe so.
Is that what I'm looking at on the map here?
Yes. In front of this property is Highway twenty-nine into the rear. I do believe that's A-one agriculture. I know that it's being used for agricultural purposes.
Correct. Okay.
So we're going from twenty-eight to thirty, well, the ordinance is thirty-five. Code?
Yeah, thirty-five, two twenties, two twenty-six. Ms. Rexdale, am I correct?
Yes. So...
I'm looking at the thirty-five feet.
The thirty-five feet would be the required front yard setback. She's not able to meet that.
She's got twenty-eight.
Yes.
That's what I was asking.
So she would, she would need, basically to extend into that setback to add that, the stoop for egress. And the same applies to the rear. Let's see.
Where is twenty-three?
She need twenty-three.
She is currently about ten feet from the rear property line, so forty feet is the standard setback requirement. The current house sits ten feet from the property line, so she would need to extend into that three feet for that three-by-three stoop.
Well, some, she has to have, correct?
Correct. By building code, yes. In order for her to rehab these houses, she needs to be able to add a front and rear stoop to meet building code.
Does this go to the BCA or Board of Supervisors?
It goes to the BCA.
Okay. Well, I would make a motion then, in case V dash two-one dash zero zero two, to grant this variance or to recommend to the BCA, the Board of Zoning Appeals, that they grant this variance.
Second that motion?
Motion by Mr. Horne, second by Mr. Horn. Any further discussion? No, we're ready for a vote.
We good on this, Emily? Okay. Okay.
Let the record show, seven yes and one... Let the record show seven yes and one absent. Ms. Rexdale, anything else?
So two, one more thing and then I'll discuss the cases for next month. So due to COVID, you all are allowed to participate virtually in meetings as long as it is adopted, so as long as it's stated in your bylaws. So we ran into an issue last week where we had some people that were unable to be here for various, last month, they were unable to be here for various reasons, but they could have participated virtually had we adopted that into the bylaws for planning commission. So staff would like to present that option to you and if that's something that you would like for us to look at, we can bring that amendment back to you for you to vote on in your December meeting.
Yeah, it's not just for COVID, it's, if you're going to do it, you have to have a written policy and the state code makes sure you have to have certain things in it. You can only do it, I don't know off the top of my head, I think it's like 25% of the meetings or two or whatever, fewer. You can't do it all the time, it's limited. You've got to have a quorum present if you do it at the actual physical location. You have to have the persons able to be heard by the public and for that person to hear the public. And so there's some hoops you have to draw, jump through. But especially in light of the pandemic, I'm surprised we haven't done this earlier in modern times with, with all the Zoom technology and Microsoft Teams and everything. I just think it's appropriate that we bring you the option to do this. The state code doesn't allow you to abuse it and do it every time. But I think it's, it's a nod towards the modern times and I think it's almost a requirement in today's world that we at least offer the option to people to do this.
And can we put the wording in there in line, basically parallel with the Board of Supervisors, what we do?
Yeah, it's probably going to be just like that. I mean, the state code is pretty strict on what you can and cannot do.
Yeah, and this, this also with us, I know that several of us go on vacation during the year and with that, some might want to answer that phone before we go any further. Now with that, if you're on vacation, you can actually go in another room on a phone and participate in the meeting. I mean, you don't have to watch it, you just basically talk on your phone and have an option to vote as well, correct? Okay, so it's, you know, I think it's nice to have and, and you know, people need to vacate too, so anyway. So if y'all could put something in writing and bring it back to us, we'll vote on it.
Do we need to make a motion on that?
Yes.
I make a motion that that wording will be added to the guidelines. That's stated.
Motion by Mr. Waters.
Yeah, we'll bring it back for you to review and then you can officially adopt it in December if it meets your liking.
I think Colette hit the second on it.
Goodness.
Most talking she's done the whole time. We'll have the option to vote.
The record show seven yes and one absent.
Yeah, that was from the last one.
Yeah, that was for the last one.
We'll fix it in a minute.
We threw her for a loop, sorry.
Y'all want to do a verbal?
You're good now?
Richard Waters?
Mr. Waters and Ms. Henderson, second.
There you go.
Now, let the record show seven yes.
There you go.
One absent. Is that it, Ms. Rexdale?
And just real quick, next month, we will have eight cases, we will have four rezonings and four special use permits. All special use permits will be for mobile home placement on R1 pieces of property. And the rezoning, most of them are from R1 to A1 or A1 to R1.
So Merry Christmas, right?
Yes. We'll have a busy, busy meeting in December.
All right. We adjourned.